The Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's customary at the beginning of each meeting that I read an open podium invitation to our residents. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting, which typically occur the first and the third Tuesday of each month. These open podiums occur between 6:30 and 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter so we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Mr. Getchow, we have a city certificate to talk about this evening.
We do, Mayor. We're pretty excited about some recognition that the city is receiving due to our Low Salt Design in Eden Prairie. So I believe I, actually, I don't know exactly who I'm inviting. Come on up. I believe we have some representatives here to walk through some of the recognition that we're receiving tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Connie Forten. I'm a Low Salt Strategist with Bolton &amp; Mink. And for the past about 30 years, my passion is to be understanding and finding ways to drive down the use of salt because salt or chloride pollution is one of the top pollutants of concern today in Minnesota. So I am very familiar with Eden Prairie's maintenance department. We've went through a lot of training together over the years. They do a fabulous job. And as I've been training winter maintenance people and plow drivers, about 20,000 of them over the years, they all trained me. And what they told me, it's not all my fault, Connie. You know, what about that intersection? What about that bridge? What about that ramp? And I thought, ah, they're onto something. I never knew what to do with it until my company was acquired by Bolton &amp; Mink a few years ago, and I woke up to us living in a sea of 1,000 engineers, planners, and people that design all the things that are salted. So I said, how about if we design for better winter performance? And they said, tell us about it. And we moved ahead with this initiative called Low Salt Design, first of its sort. We spent about a year doing internal development of these ideas, and then we were ready for some pilot cities. And guess who raised their hand? The city of Eden Prairie, of course. And so I've had just the great pleasure of working with them this year, explaining our ideas, looking at their problem sites, having many discussions about how we might do something different in the winter. And it's so inspiring to me. So I just want you to know, you should be very proud of your city, your staff. They showed up, they brought their ideas, they brought their challenges, and you're moving ahead. You're leading the nation right now in moving these ideas ahead. So thank you for the opportunity to work with you and your staff. You should be very proud of them. And I'd like to present a certificate.
Keep talking, and I'll come down.
I'm going to read it to you. Okay? This is a Low Salt Solutions Leadership Award. It's for in recognition of the city of Eden Prairie for your leadership in exploring new approaches to chloride reduction. Low Salt Design will improve winter safety and reduce the need for salt. Your insight during this pilot program helps refine Low Salt Design guidance that will benefit many. So on behalf of Bolton &amp; Mink, I'd like to give this to the city.
So Mayor, as you come back, I was going to mention, we do have multiple representatives
from Bolton &amp; Mink, and then also a big part of this project is Lori Hack, who's our city water resource coordinator as well, who's a big part of this project, along with working with many other divisions in the city. But she's a big part of this.
I noticed in last week's snowstorm in preparation that the pre-salting, those stripes in the road, right, had been done across the cities. So that, yeah, that is, it's pretty cool. I'm assuming there's data out there that shows that works. I mean, anecdotally, it feels like it does, so I'm assuming since we've adopted it in our own internal staff, Robert, know how well it works. So do you, Robert, off the top of your head, it's okay if you don't have it. Do you have a sense on the reduction percentage of salt that we're using based on these, obviously, this winter, very little, but in a normal winter, do you have a sense on what we might be saving in salt usage?
Well, just anecdotally, I can tell you that if you were to look at what the salt spread rates are on maybe a Minnaht roadway or Hennepin County roadway, they might be at 300 to 500 pounds of salt per lane mile. And we generally try to stay around 100 to 150. So I mean, if you spread that out over 540 miles in Eden Prairie, I mean, it adds up to tons of salt each year that you can reduce if you're just a little bit more proactive. And it takes more effort, it takes training, it takes getting out before the storm, but it pays off at the end of the day from financial standpoint, environmental standpoint, and just employee morale because they do such a good job. I mean, it pays off in every way, so.
That's great. And in all fairness to the county, I mean, they need to be, well, maybe, bare pavement often in areas that maybe we can choose not to be, but nonetheless, it's resulting in savings, well, not just in cost, but also certainly in environmental impact. So thank you. So thank you for all the advice you've given our great staff. And you are correct, we have the best staff, and we are early adopters on any new innovative, creative idea that we think could better serve our residents. So nice to hear that confirmation back. All right. Moving on, we have approval of agenda and other items of business. And just to add to that, Councilmember Norion has one council member report to add, and then I think mine is already on there. City Manager Performance Review is already on there. So just the addition of Councilmember Norion. Anything else to add to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Minutes, we have the two meetings, and if it's okay, unless, if you have questions, please ask about either meeting, but if not, if there's somebody that would make a motion to approve the workshop and the council meeting held back on March 12th. Let me ask first, any additions or corrections or edits? Okay. Would somebody make the motion to approve both?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, March 12, 2024. City council meeting held Tuesday, March 12, 2024.
Sir, second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Consent calendar, we have items A through N. Are there any items on the consent calendar you'd like to learn more about, pull, to question, anything? If not, is there someone that would make a motion to approve items A through N?
A move for approval of items A through N on the consent calendar.
Sir, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Moving then, Mr. Getchow, we have two fairly straightforward public hearings this evening.
We do, Mayor. Thank you. So the first, and we've had this recently, and you heard a little bit about this at the workshop, is a city's support of pass-through funding from the state of Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, DED. Businesses in Eden Prairie can apply to DED for different grant programs. And this particular grant program, the Minnesota Investment Fund, requires a city public hearing prior to the city passing a resolution supporting that particular grant program. You may recall that another corporation in Eden Prairie, NVE, recently was before us with a similar request. And when you say that it's somewhat housekeeping, it is and it isn't. It's housekeeping due to the fact that obviously we would support these dollars going into businesses at Eden Prairie to support their job growth, employment growth, and also any renovations that they'd be making to their properties. But also, it is, it's an important thing to support our growing businesses in Eden Prairie. You may have noticed that they also have your support for an application for the Job Creation Fund as well. NVE did the same thing. Aldeveron is asking the same thing as well, but that doesn't require a public hearing, and you approved that on the consent agenda. So in this particular case, it's $3.7 million of a grant that they're looking for to do renovations and expansion on their new office building. Again, that office building, Aldeveron building, you also approved as a land use item on a previous agenda that came to the city council in the Golden Triangle, very close to the, like, rail station that's in that area. I do not, I do know that they're not representatives of Aldeveron here tonight, but I know you're very familiar with their project, with their operation, so staff could answer any questions that you may have about the program. But again, it's state law that we need to hold a public hearing so anybody in the public could comment on that application, and then we ask that you adopt the resolution, resolution supporting that.
Just a quick question. So these grant proposals come from the business, come into the city, and ask us then on their behalf to submit. So if that's accurate, the air and a, but then, but just a quick follow-up to that, do we, any business that came to us, we would just pass through and submit and hope to get the grant? Are there reasons that we would not want to submit 27 of these in a year? I guess I'm just curious about the process.
That's a good question, Mayor. I think we're approached typically from the company. We're, we're not necessarily filling out the application, we're providing a resolution of support. And I know we've done this probably in the last 12 years, maybe 10 times, and there hasn't been a single reason we would not support that. But, but we do have to, you know, council is that last line of your decision. So there could be a situation where you don't, but there hasn't been one.
Great. That's good. Good to hear. Yes, question?
One question. So this fund is only used for development of buildings or also used for, like, hiring employees?
So this particular one, Councilmember Norion, the Minnesota Investment Fund, I believe, is only for capital renovations or improvements to your building?
So this fund cannot be used for hiring five people or 10 people in a company?
That's correct. But, but I believe that the application that was on the consent agenda for job creation, that one can.
I see. Thank you, sir.
So Council, you can ask questions after we hold the public hearing if you wish, or now, otherwise I'll open it up. So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this resolution, supporting this application, please come forward. Seeing none, Council, do you want to go ahead then, close the public hearing and adopt it? We can still discuss it if you wish.
Move to close the public hearing and adopt supporting application to the Minnesota Investment Fund by the city of Eden Prairie on behalf of Eden Prairie-based company Aldeveron.
Sir, second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Mr. Getchow, second resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, this is related to Aldeveron as well, but it applies to many of your development projects. We're following approval in many cases due to the site and the infrastructure improvements that are made. We need to vacate older drainage and utility easements and then have newer easements that may come at a later date. So with that same Aldeveron project, you are requesting to vacate part of a drainage and utility easement as part of that project.
Any questions before I hold and open up the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council this evening on this resolution vacating these easements, please come forward. Seeing none, Council, if someone wants to close the public hearing, and go ahead and make the motion.
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating part of the drainage and utility easement lying over, under, across Lot 1, Block 2, Liberty Plaza.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. When I taught sixth grade prepositions, that would have been a great sentence, over, under, and across. All right. Payment, remember the rabbit runs blank, okay, anyway, all the good old days. All right. Payment of claims. And Council, any items, again, these are like our expenditures in the old days, the checks that were cut, but any items of the multi-page list that you wish to question? If not, is there a motion to approve payment of claims?
I move approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Sir, second.
Second.
This requires a roll call vote.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Norion.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right. We have one report of council member before my report. Councilmember Norion.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I want to take this opportunity to wish happy birthday to our mayor. He was, he was the birthday yesterday.
You're a day late and a dollar short.
No, he was there yesterday, and I truly tried to convince our city manager to change our city council meeting.
Oh, really?
To yesterday, but he said no.
April Fools.
Yep. So, so I think we all want to say happy birthday.
Appreciate that. Let's not sing, though.
And, and, and that's not singing because I'm not a good singer. And then, secondly, also, many of you know that Mayor Case just announced his retirement yesterday as well.
Not from Mayor.
Not from Mayor. Yeah, that's right. He's going to be here for a while. So we also want to say congratulations and wish you a great retirement, and we expect you to work lot more hours.
As Mayor.
As a mayor.
I appreciate that very much. I did choose April 1st because it was my birthday, and I wanted to work till a certain age. I chose that date to retire from United Health Group. So it's been a good run. Many of you know I had 33 and a third years in the public school system, and then 11 years at United Health Group. Two years prior to that, out of college in a church setting. But anyway, that's been my 47-year run. So it's been, it's been a good one so far. I hope to have a few more years left here.
Happy birthday.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that very much. All right. I'm going to toss the ball here over to our attorney. Many of you know that this, this in a moment, just giving you a heads up. Many people, residents of our city, know that we are a statutory Plan B city. What that means is we take our basically charter or our constitution from the state of Minnesota. It was actually created in 1858 for all cities. If cities wish to deviate from that, they can choose to hold a charter convention basically and write their own rules, and they can have numbers of people on a council, they can have wards, they have all kinds of things. We're not that. We are statutory Plan B, which means we have a city manager that runs the city. We, as a council, set the policies and procedures and kind of the philosophy for governance, and then we set the budget. And then we direct our city manager to go and do the work that we direct him to do. In this case, he'll hire the 300 full-time employees and 700 part-time seasonal, something around 1,000, and he does a truly phenomenal job. But once a year, we annually review him, and then we set his salary, and we backdate it to January 1st. This is really common practice across cities across the state of Minnesota, particularly statutory Plan B cities, of which we do compare ourselves to quite a bit. And it's the cities that all of you recognize, the Plymouths and Edinas and Menetankas and Bloomingtons and Woodbury's. It's, there's a group I don't even know, probably 30, 40, 50 in that type of statutory Plan B type setting. So we did that at the last meeting. Because it's an employee relationship meeting, that's a closed session. We're allowed to close our session to the public only for two reasons. One is legal to conversations, and the second is employee conversations, of which we have one employee, that's Mr. Getchow. So we did that at the last meeting, and I'm going to give it over for a moment here, and then I'll take it back. I'll give it to our attorney, who will talk about kind of why we have done this process like we have.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You haven't left me a whole lot more to explain.
Sorry.
You did a very good job.
Sorry.
As you know, as a default, all of the council's meeting must be open to the public under Minnesota's open meeting law. Like you said, one of the reasons we can close a meeting is to evaluate the performance of an employee who's subject to your authority. And so, like you said, we did that at the last meeting. We held a closed session where you evaluated Mr. Getchow's performance and set his salary. The law requires that at the next open council meeting that you give a summary of the evaluation at the open meeting, and so that's what this agenda item is intended to do.
Great. So Council, I intend to read the summary, and then we can either make the motion on his salary and/or, or whatever you want to do, give you an opportunity to share thoughts if you wish. You know what, but he has to. Often, council members do say a few words, maybe, about how we feel about our city manager, so I'm just giving you a heads up on that. But I will read the summary of our closed session from our last meeting. So the title, summary of closed session held March 12, 2024. The city manager's contract provides for an annual performance review by the city council in conjunction with a salary review. At its meeting on March 12, 2024, the city council held a closed session to evaluate the performance of the city manager for the prior year. In the closed session, Mr. Getchow summarized some of the city's accomplishments in 2023 under his leadership, including success with fiscal and budget management that has preserved the city's AAA bond rating, allowed for a very modest tax levy increase relative to other cities while maintaining high city service levels. He highlighted achievements in affordable housing, sustainability, enhanced community engagement, and successful community events. He also highlighted staff's efforts in exploring additional state and federal funding for city projects. Mr. Getchow also discussed upcoming goals for 2024, including city projects and continuing to enhance and expand community events and engagement. The council then considered and discussed Mr. Getchow's performance, giving him overwhelmingly positive reviews. Each member of the council praised Mr. Getchow's excellent performance. They stated that he is a great communicator, he provides valuable mentorship. They commented on Mr. Getchow's fiscal management, the outstanding loyal staff that he has assembled, and the positive work environment the city employees enjoy under his leadership. They also committed his ability to work with a broad range of community members and businesses in the city. They encouraged him to continue efforts to increase diversity in city hiring and to explore additional technology that could be implemented to enhance citizen engagement. The council then discussed Mr. Getchow's salary in light of his excellent performance review. The council determined to increase Mr. Getchow's salary up to $230,000 and to provide $20,000 in employee health insurance premiums and PTO contributions or deferred compensation. Council, why don't we make the motion since I've already worded what's in here, and then I'll give you an opportunity, if you wish, to, to add a couple of thoughts? So is there somebody that would move the requested action?
Move to approve an increase in the city manager's salary for 2024 to $230,000 and provide an additional $20,000 in employee health insurance premiums and PTO contributions and deferred compensation.
Or deferred compensation.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Just wanted to be clear because this, yeah, that or might matter in that case. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion just on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Council, anyone wish to add additional words regarding Mr. Getchow's summary annual, summary of his annual performance?
I'll go. Unless Lisa wants to go.
Sure, I'll go first. Whoever, you go first.
Yeah. Oh, well, just that everything, I think, obviously, we really enjoy working with you and because you're, because of your expertise, your willingness to always help, and your patience, I appreciate that especially because I'm the newest one here, and sometimes there's, you know, I know you probably shake your head at the questions I ask, but, oh, well. So, but yeah, I just really enjoy working with you, and I know that all of us do, so thank you.
Ms. Councilmember Norion.
Rick, you know, when we go to the city council meetings outside, and I see how people watch you, respect you, and I hear how great you are, and you are truly, I mean, it makes us feel good when other people say, other city managers say, wow, you have an awesome city, and you have an awesome city manager. It's really awesome. Additionally, some other thing Mayor Case said, I just want to repeat, you know, your reputation is very good. You, you, your performance is awesome. You know, I always, you know, I always ask, are we the one of the lowest tax rate cities? And you maintain that to be third or fourth among, meanwhile, you keeping very high performance of the city. The maintenance of AAA bond rating, Mayor Wilson, great park system, you manage all these people such a way to give us an awesome city to live in, and we are lucky to have you, and I think you certainly deserve the salary and reputation and all these things. So thank you so much, and like Lisa said, helping me as well to do my job better because you do help me a lot, and thank you, and appreciate it. And I hope you like your race.
Please don't ever leave.
Councilmember Nelson, anything? You don't have to, but you may.
Yeah, no, I think we all probably have a couple of kind words. Rick, you do do an excellent job managing the city and the whole community, much less us, greatly appreciates the facts that our city has some of the lowest taxes with some of the highest services year after year for everyone. And there's no one that really doesn't touch having that available to them as a community member, and so I'd greatly like to say thank you, and we do appreciate it.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
In government, I've found through the years I've sat on the council, there's two type of people. There's bureaucrats, and then there's leaders. When I look at Rick and work with Rick, Rick's a rare combination of three key elements. One is his knowledge of the many years he's done this. One is his leadership ability, and one's his amazing communication skills, which I think is, sets him apart from others that I know in his position that I've met. When you put these together, there's no question about it that Rick is a strong leader. Thank you.
Yes, I agree with all that, and well said. I'll just add that we in Eden Prairie are, I don't even know if, I was going to say arguably, I don't even think it's arguable, we're a top-five city in the state of Minnesota, if not number one or number two in so many categories. I know PG's always wanting us to be number one and everything. I think we might be, but I'll just say for right now, we're top five in almost everything. We also, you know, in terms of reputation, in terms of people wanting to live here, in terms of our quality of life, in terms of our survey results, we truly are recognized by our residents as that top five, top three, number one. And in that sense, we need to be compensating a leader of our community who is also recognized as being one of the top two, three, five, number one, maybe, I think, but city managers in the state of Minnesota. So we need to compensate in that range. That, that was what we talked about, I think, as a council. You don't, you don't pay your leader 27th, you know, most salary in the state when we're number one in everything. We want to keep him here, but we also want to compensate him fairly. So, Rick, you, everyone said it, you're amazingly competent. I love the fact that you are so relationship. I love the fact that you are so relationship-based and have relationship capabilities as a strength of yours. So we're all pleased that you're here. I hope you stay a long time. I've super enjoyed working with you. I hope I get that opportunity for the few more years to come, at least in my term. Hopefully, you'll be there longer than I, but all right. Anything, Mr. Getcho, you want to add?
Just briefly, Mayor and councilmembers, it's, I remember, obviously, being in this profession, I knew when I interviewed for this job, I interviewed live, you know, at a televised council meeting. So you have to deal with that and the fact that your review is live on TV as well. But just the only comment I want to make, being the face of the employees of the city, it's the employees here that make this such an excellent community and city to work. And you mentioned earlier, the 300 full-time and 700 part-time. Those are the people that make Eden Prairie the great place to live and work and dream. Being the person that's on the dais representing them to the council is something I appreciate doing, but it's a testament to their work, simple as that.
So that's the kind of statement that a really strong leader makes. So I appreciate that. And you are right, it's our amazing employees. That being said, we all know in organizations like this that that top leader sets the tone, set the philosophy, set the whole expectations. And so you, you've been here now 13 years, I think. That's a, that's a lot of time to draw people in. In other words, this organization reflects you now. And so if it was not a good organization, if we were having troubles, if we were having complaints from residents all the time, that would reflect you. But it's exactly the opposite. We get rave reviews of our staff. And we have, I think, the best police and fire departments in the state of Minnesota. And I think we get recognized for that. And we have the best maintenance, we have the best road snow removal group in the whole state. We just have phenomenal staff. And I, yes, you lead that and it's there, you know, they deserve the credit, but so do you because you assembled that group. So we're, and you make us, you know, we're citizen government. We get, you know, we get the complaints if there are complaints, but we get the praise if there's praise. But we try to throw it back onto you all too, because it's you that make us look good and really help us do our job better. So we hope that we can support you as well as we can as well, the whole, support all of our thousand staff. All right, council, anything else? All right, I believe we have come to the end of our meeting. Is there anything else to come before the meeting this evening, Mr. Getcho or council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's city council meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Go ahead and.
Move to adjourn the city council meeting tonight.
Councilmember, would you second it?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, this meeting is adjourned.